Between 5:45 and 5:55, the day of the meeting. Rule call of officers.
Duffy.
Here.
Horning.
Here.
Streeter.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Will.
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any announcements? I just have one. Just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and thank staff and the board for all the hard work over the years. So, anybody else have any announcements? President's staff, or President's Business and Staff Reports, Library, Heather.
Thank you. This December, we, because we couldn't have the Santa night, we did Santa letters. And Santa was able to answer 52 letters that were written. And so they were personally, they were tailored to each child according to what they had written in their letters, so kind of personalized. So, we also did a virtual Santa Storytime. And we posted it on YouTube and on Facebook. And it had about 1,300 views between the different formats. So, we were happy with that, too. And we have a Zoom Book Club. So, we usually had met in person for that as well, but we've been meeting through Zoom. So, this upcoming month, we're going to be doing Ordinary Grace by William Kent Krieger. And if anybody wants to join, they just have to contact me so I can give them a secure link to join in via Zoom. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Administrator, Nick.
Thank you. As you probably read in the weekly report, we did, probably a couple of months ago, we decided we, obviously, weren't going to have our normal, we normally have a staff Christmas party during the day, like a potluck type Christmas party. We decided, obviously, with COVID that that wasn't a good idea this year. So, about a week before last week, I decided I wanted to do a to-go meal for everyone. And some of my staff really helped out. And we made some potatoes and corn and some turkey. And we had to go hot meals for all of our staff. I think we put about 42 of them together. And everybody came and picked them up in a little gift. And they left and went back to their respective places and ate their meal by themselves. But it was still, I think, well deserved. And it was also well received. And it was a very good meal. So, thank you for everyone that put in the time and effort to help make that a success. Also, utility budgets been finalizing those last couple of weeks here. And one thing I just wanted to touch on, we're getting a lot of phone calls lately about political signs and election signs. We are able to police, so to speak, where they're located, maybe what they look like in some senses, that they're not all falling apart and everything. But as far as the timelines go, there really isn't anything we can do on that. And that's going back to some Supreme Court cases over the years. Most, the most pertinent one maybe is in Pewaki. Basically, the DOT, even the DOT's in the state statutes, it basically says that due to that Supreme Court case, they don't limit the time in which they're placed. So, we can limit where they are, how big they are, types of things like that, zoning stuff. But we can't limit where or when they are placed. And the reason for that is the First Amendment, the freedom of speech. So, that is, and I can, you know, I can give you that case and stuff if you want to look at it. But I even did some research last week. Right in the DOT's website, they talk about the political signs in the state right-of-ways. And right at the bottom, it states that case and says, they still have timelines listed in the DOT's statutes. But at the bottom, it says they don't enforce that because of that Supreme Court case. So, we do get a lot of questions, a lot of calls on that. I know that there is maybe some understanding that there is timelines on that stuff. But in reality, legally, with these Supreme Court cases for freedom of speech, we're really not able to do much about that. Because at that point, you know, some of the stuff I've read about it, is it necessarily an election sign? Or, you know, people could put up a sign in their yard for anything, really, as long as it meets zoning requirements. So, get a lot of calls on that. And, you know, the last few weeks, we've had a lot of calls on that. And, you know, if you drive around some other communities, too, I mean, I've been up to Green Bay and some other areas, and you see them, they're everywhere. And that the reason that they're still up in some is because of, there's really nothing we can do about it. So, I just wanted to update the board on that. I know there was some question, there was a lot of, we've had a lot of calls from the community, and there's, we get a lot of calls about that. So, any questions on that?
I guess, are there, so you said there's regulations about the size?
So, there is, in certain cases, yes. And eight by, usually, 32 square feet is generally the largest of the sizes that you'll see, which is four by eight sheet of plywood, if you think about it that way, which is a pretty large sign. I don't know that locally, we have, we do have some size restrictions. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay.
But none of our signs, I think, that are out are probably exceeding that.
Okay.
And like I said, the only other thing I would say is, we have in, for like safety vision issues, we've, and we have addressed those. If they're in the public right-of-way, we can remove them. And we've done a lot of that this past election. And we've actually had, one of the larger ones that we get a lot of calls about, we did have that one moved because it was a safety issue. And I talked to the homeowner, and they did move it on their own at one point.
Okay.
And we do what we can, but there's certain things that legally we just aren't able to do.
Okay.
Anything else, Nick?
No.
All right. Thank you. Police Department, Darren.
Thank you. So, I mentioned in my weekly report that I had participated in a Zoom conference last week from the Health Department regarding the upcoming COVID vaccination clinics, I guess, for lack of a better term. Spent a little bit of time, had an opportunity to ask some questions, but also getting other questions answered. In addition to that, I have now received from the Health Department a local survey on how, we're going to roll that out locally in Fond du Lac County. I think that's now the fourth or fifth survey that I've completed regarding the COVID vaccination. I only share that because it's occupying a lot of my time as of late, dealing with that, how that's going to all shake out when it comes into play. So, been dealing with that whole issue. And then the other thing that I want to talk about tonight is, over the weekend, the last couple of nights, we've noticed an increase in the number of winter parking violations. My guess is that the reasons for that are probably one of two things, either college kids coming home and just unaware of the fact that the regulations are in place, or visitors to homes with the holidays coming up. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind residents and all of you, if you have kids coming home, if you have visitors coming over, make sure you share with them what the restrictions are, because we are enforcing it regardless of whether or not there's snow on the ground. So, do yourselves and them a favor and let them know. That's all I have.
Thanks, Darren.
Thanks, Darren. Fire EMS, Jake.
Thank you. We received a donation that Doug Parman kind of got the ball rolling on from Egman Taylor. We budgeted for 2021 some Milwaukee Power Tools to replace our old DeWalt Tools. And he was able to get a portion of what we're going to replace donated through contacts that he works with. So, we obviously appreciate that and look forward to working with them, replacing the rest of the tools next year. The thermal imaging cameras that we got through a grant through Firehouse Subs got put in service last week. So, we went through programming and training on them to make sure the guys know how to utilize them. And it definitely beefs up the amount of thermal imaging cameras that we have on our trucks, which is good, and gets them spread out a little bit better so we can operate a little bit better responding to some incidents. And then, like Chief Pouchett said, a lot of work on the COVID side of things. The EOC group actually is taking this week and then the following week off because of the holidays and meeting as needed, I guess, to finalize the planning aspect of the vaccination. And no dates or anything have been set, really. So, they did send that survey out, you know, and discussions that we had with the Health Department through that group is developing a plan to make sure that the people that need it get it first, essentially, and making sure that there's an area that you can give it, and so on and so forth with the amount of people that there are that need to get it. So, looking forward, hopefully, sooner than later, we can start getting the first responders in the county vaccinated to ensure their safety and try to alleviate the sick time and so on and so forth to make sure everybody stays fully staffed. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jake.
Yep.
Did you have anything for Public Courts?
Yep, I'll just add a note there. If you recall, last time, we talked about switching over recycling contractor, which is going to be Harder's. They, we've had more discussions with back and forth. It sounds like the plan right now, well, it's, it will be the plan, January 19th and January 20th will be the changeover date, so to speak. Waste Management will pick up the cans on those two dates. And then Harder's will be here those days to drop off the new cans. So, it should be pretty seamless for the residents. There will be like a two-page document, or front and back document, and the new can explaining just the change and the dates, the calendar, which we've already provided in tax bills anyways. But, so, what we ended up doing is extending, signing a real short-term contract with Waste Management for the month of January, because otherwise, we would have had about a week and a half without a can and/or people having those cans, both cans at the same time. So, it just worked out to be better this way, to make it more seamless. So, we'll get something out on Facebook and on our webpage. And then, of course, there won't be a lot, we really won't have to send out a lot, because it literally will probably, you put your can out, they'll pick it up and take it with them, and there'll be another can there when they're gone, so.
One quick question. I may have asked that last meeting, but is a can same size?
Yes. It might even be a little, yes, around the same size, very close to it, if not a little bigger. I don't know the exact specifics.
Is the schedule going to change at all?
No.
John.
Nick, are they identifying them? I think those who are connected have ID numbers on them. Are they going to identify them or associate to a house?
I'm sure they will, the Harder's will. But yeah, it'll be a totally new, different-looking can. It won't be the green and yellow that we have now, or that's what waste managements are right now, right? The green and yellow.
Yeah.
I think they're a totally different color. But I'm sure they will keep track, Harder's will keep track of that, yeah.
Any other questions? Anything else, Nick, for DPW?
Uh, no, just that they had gone out and done some more tree trimming with, and then they're waiting for the ground to freeze to do some tree removals in the park.
All right. Thanks, Nick.
I have a question about the bobs in the building. How's that for me?
Oh, they, with their schedule, they were hoping to be here before Christmas. That doesn't look like that's going to happen. It'll be, hopefully, the week after Christmas or the following week.
Okay. Well, we need them to get into the building, then?
I don't know a good answer to that right now. The keys will still work, but we probably will likely get the board members also.
Okay. Thank you.
The implementation of that is not really, we don't really know all the details yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Nick? All right, seeing none, going down to the consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following Village Board Meeting from December 7th, and approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn on their respective funds as indicated. General Fund, $26,251.16. Library Fund, $123.94. EMS Fund, $2,411. Capital Projects, $180,177.82. Water Department, $6,222.99. Waste Water Department, $8,491.51. Stormwater Fund, $249,690.47. For grand total of $473,368.89. What is the Board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
You got a second?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Will, second by Price, to approve the consent agenda as read. Are there any questions? Mike?
Just kind of quick, page seven, you have it for them, Signs for the Pool, 1620. I'm sure they're, I'm just kind of curious what they are. It's a Papenheim.
Yeah, that's the signs for the pool for the, if you recall, I maybe shared with the board the design. It's more of a, it's a vinyl sheet-type sign that'll go on the front and the back of the pool. And that is all paid for by Oriole Open money.
Sweet.
An indesignedated fund. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're chucking it.
So, the Besseod stuff, it looks like you paid for that this time. Did that come in on budget, then?
Yeah. It was slightly under budget.
Oh, okay.
Compared to the, well, we had this discussion before. It was slightly under the bid amount.
Okay.
But the budget, if you recall, the budget was kind of all over the place depending on the utilities and the, the three utilities and the general fund. Some were higher, some were lower, but at the time, so to answer your question, it is a little bit different than the budgeted numbers.
Sure. It's in line with expectations, so there weren't overruns that we're paying or anything like that.
Slightly under expectation.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Moving down to administrative. Number one, discussion and possible action on appointing chief election inspectors for the 2021 elections in the Village of North Fond du Lac. Elizabeth Kraft and Charles Horning.
This is just something we do, we try to do every year. We legally have to do it every two years. And this is our, we're appointing as chief inspectors for next year.
Anybody have any questions on this item? What is the Board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to appoint chief election inspectors for 2021, Elizabeth Kraft and Charles Horning.
You got a second?
Second.
Motion by Price, second by Duffy, to approve the chief election inspectors for 2021, Elizabeth Kraft and Charles Horning. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thanks to Chuck and Elizabeth Kraft for doing that. Appreciate it. Number two, discussion and possible action on the 2021 water, wastewater, stormwater utility budgets.
All right. I provided those in the packets that I emailed out. And what I'd like to do here, like I mentioned earlier, Darren Parsons is not here. If there's any specific questions that I can't answer, we'll bring this back next time, of course. And the, what we normally would do with this is review it tonight, final review next time, along with passing it to the next meeting with the resolutions. If that doesn't happen, we can always delay it, no problem. I mean, we used to do this in March and April some years, and we're getting closer to having it done by the first of the year, which is, which is good. So, if there's no objections, what I'll do is I'll just start with water. I'll walk through the gen, the main parts of the, and highlight anything. If there's any questions, I won't get too carried away with the details unless somebody has questions about it, and we'll go from there. So, getting started with water, looking at page one on the water, you know, that first section is all revenue, really not a lot to note there. Town of Fond du Lac on-call maintenance, that's just something we, we obviously provide water service to the Town of Fond du Lac. We also provide them with some maintenance, too. We do their hydrant flushing. We also are out there daily checking on things. So, as part of that, we've come up with an agreement with them that we charge them. I think it's 100 hours of a full-time person, is what it works out to be, or, that might not be right, maybe 100 hours a quarter. But that is the amount that we would, we charge them on a quarterly basis. It's, we charge them on a quarterly basis. And then, interest income, you'll see, we saw this in the general fund, you know, it's taken quite a hit this year. We budgeted 10,000. Last year, we collected 14,000. This year, we're looking at probably close to 4,000 instead of the 14 like last year. So, that took a pretty good hit, and budgeting that low again next year. Moving down into operating revenue, most of that, there's no surprises there. It's pretty much on pace with what we've seen in the past years and what we budgeted. So, I won't really touch on anything there. Late charges, I'll just highlight that, you know, for a good part of this year, we weren't, we were not able to charge late charges because of COVID. So, those took a little bit of a hit. We're expecting that to come back next year. Moving then down to debt payments, there's really, sorry. Yep.
Seal water, you have zero, and the details you have 500. So, your numbers are all 500, and that's, can you detail your?
Oh, thank you. That's not, somebody.
It's not a big difference.
Yeah, usually when that happens, somebody accidentally hit a, you know, that's supposed to be pulling it from that detail. So, thank you. That formula's not working. Water debt payments, you'll see, there's not much change there from this year to next year. It's 201,000 this year, 202,000 next year. Not much discussed there. Payroll taxes, and then charge in lieu of taxes, that's, that's what basically, we pay the general fund because the water utility doesn't pay taxes. So, they, they give the general fund $133,000 in lieu of taxes. And then the amortization. Debt discount, skipping to the next page. Again, supplies and expenses, not a lot to talk about. Pumping expenses, not much changing there. I do, I did note I'm going to talk to Darren. If you look at supplies and expenses, it's, it's just, I'm a little bit nervous on why it's so high. And then next year, we're back down to 3,000. It's at 7450 right now. So, I just want to, I'm going to touch bases with Darren on that. I didn't have time to do that yet. Moving down to water treatment, the only one that stands out to me in there a little bit is the chemicals were a little higher this year. And I'm going to ask Darren on the, why that was. I know there's good reason for it, I just don't recall.
I've got a question on operating labor. Your actuals like 13 and 18, and I think you're kind of low in 21.
Yeah, so I talked to Darren about this, and this is all, it's kind of this discussion we have with the general fund, too. So, all the hours for the public works crew, you know, you take all of them and add them all up, and there's those, that many thousand hours. And you have to, we have to do our best job at the beginning of the year, kind of guessing where they're going to spend their time. And certain years, something pops up, and you have to spend more time there. This exact account, I agree with you, I talked to Darren about this. And the, the issue with it, I shouldn't say the issue, but the, it's, you have to take the hours from somewhere and put them here. So, it's going to, it takes a lot of figuring, I should, the way.
The only question is 19 and 20, you were up there.
Exactly. And that's the exact conversation I had with Darren. In order to change it, those hours are in here somewhere. But in order to get it to work correctly, we've got to take the, those hours from somewhere else. And it's just, it's quite an exercise to do. It takes a long time to kind of go. So, what we try to do is do averages, and usually, they work out in the end. But we did talk about that, and we are going to probably, next year, he's going to spend some time kind of going through that process again. Transmission distribution, that next section, I have highlighted that operating labor right now is less, the estimated actual is less than the actual. So, I need to, we need to correct that. And part of this becomes, you know, we're so late in the year that maybe he did this a month ago, and then something happened, and now we're seeing the actual at the end of the year, basically, is what we're looking at. And then, maintenance and expense, not much to talk about there. Really, with these, with these utility budgets, you know, we go in year after year, we kind of, they just kind of get tweaked every year, and they're a lot more black and white than the general fund budgets, because, you know, we can't not treat the water, right? I mean, it's just, there's just specific things we have to do in the water, in the wastewater, in the stormwater. So, they're a lot easier in that sense. And I really don't have much to add in the rest of this, except if we get all the way down to capital projects. Just highlight that, you know, we, that we spent quite a bit of money this year in capital, $272,000. That was mainly the Besseod project. We did not do any borrowing. We didn't plan on doing any borrowing. And you'll notice at the end here, we had budgeted $191,000 loss. We are going to be about $194,000 loss. And you'll see that the difference there, there was a pretty significant difference in the Besseod project and the water department. We had, 228 was budgeted, and it came in at 272. So, that's what I was talking about, but we did know that going into the project. The water department, I have that sitting here, my financial audit. Currently, is sitting in a pretty good position. It's in almost a million dollars, and it's cash on hand. So, we certainly have the money to cover that, that loss, and we were planning on doing so.
Nick, just for personal knowledge and looking at the water, when you go through this, at what point does a rate increase or stay the same?
Yep.
Or decreases are?
That's a great question. And it's, it's more of a marathon thing we look at. So, we look at, you know, we do like a five-year financial forecast, or a 10-year even sometimes. So, that's probably an exercise we'll go through next year, the year after. To do a rate increase, there's two types of rate increases in the water, because it's regulated by PSC. There's a simplified rate case and a full rate case. We've done both in my time here. I think the most recent one was maybe in 2016, we did a simplified rate case, which was a 3% increase. Prior to that, we did a 10% increase in 2010, I believe. To answer your question shortly, we probably aren't looking at a rate increase for the next few years. Now, the one thing hanging out there is well number five, we've talked about a little bit. If that, that's about a million-dollar investment, probably. We'll really look at that when we start getting closer to that, as far as a financial forecast, and looking at five to seven years, and looking at if we need a rate increase. Does that kind of answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
But aren't we paying more for that 10-year thing, because we have more capacity than we need, or something like that? And that impacts our rates?
I'm not following you.
I thought we, we like bought more capacity than we need.
Oh, that's wastewater.
So, that doesn't, that's different than this?
Yes. Yep. Any questions on that? If not, we'll skip ahead to the wastewater. Wastewater first section, again, being revenues. Those revenues, again, are looking right on, right on par with where they have been. And, you know, I think we've got a pretty good system down for estimating those and looking forward. Again, late charges, things like that are taking a hit. Late charges and some of this stuff, you look at the estimated actuals, and they're off a little bit, that are very small numbers. I'm not too concerned about those. One thing I just want to highlight as we move down to bond and principal and interest, and you'll see it show up in the next section. But if you look at this Fond du Lac demonification project, principal and interest, you'll notice that there's budgeted dollars there, but there's no current actual. The reason for that is it's actually charged, if you, if you go down one section, it says payment due to the City of Fond du Lac Treatment Plant. It's paid under that account, just from a utility standpoint, an auditor standpoint, we have to pay it there, because it's, it's not actually our debt service. But it is a debt service. So, we budget it as a debt service, just for our use, to kind of look at it. It makes more sense to us that way. So, that's why you'll see those estimated actuals kind of different, but the, I'm sorry, the current actuals being high. But the estimated actuals are correct on those two accounts. Does that make sense? So, looking down at the payment due to the City of Fond du Lac Treatment, 317,000. And that is the amount that we have been paying, and I think we pay it through 2025, if I recall, 2026 possibly. That was a plant upgrade. And that is a sort of a debt service to, to the treatment plant. And part of that is for Village territory right now, and part of it's for extraterritorial sewer capacity that we purchased back then. At the time, there was reason behind it. We, you know, we have way more than we need currently. But we also, you know, we've got to be aware of that. At some point, we will grow. So, that's where that, that's where that is.
When you talk about those, group, that group that you're in and that agreement?
OSG, yep.
Is that separate from that, then? That included agreement?
Yeah, so, everybody, the agreement is the same, no, it's, it's all in one. Everybody has their own payments to the plant. So, we are, the Village of North Fond du Lac is approximately 25% of the OSG. The OSG, the Outlying Sewer Group, is approximately 26% of the treatment plant. Actually, 30, I'm sorry, 30% of the treatment plant. So, we're 26% of 30%.
Got it.
And the city owns the remaining seventy percent.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, but you're working on a new contract, is that correct?
We're working on a revision to the contract. The contract, the OSG contract was originally in place in twenty-twenty, in two thousand. It was at, the way it was written was at twenty-year mark, that was the time when you could take a look at it and revise it if you wanted to. It didn't have to be, it's still perpetual agreement. So we're currently working on that. We're also working on this allocation of how much capacity we each own at the plant. But in the case that we own what we own, we've paid for it since two thousand and eight, and we can't just give it back and get money for it. So we own it, so to speak. So we, we'll continue to pay for it. The only thing that won't, that could change that is if another district wanted to buy more capacity at the plant. And they say, you know what, we're going to be growing more, say, the Town of Fond du Lac. We're going to grow, we have all this growth, we need a little bit more capacity to plant. At that point, we could sell them a portion of that, if we felt comfortable doing that.
They would take over the payments until 2025?
They would actually pay us.
So we, it's an asset that the.
It's an asset, yeah. I mean, they would owe us all of, it's all spelled out in the contract.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the only thing on this page I want to highlight, almost to the bottom, the third line up is City of Fond du Lac Treatment expense. And I know we've talked about this several times over the last few years. We budget four-hundred-thousand dollars a year. That is a cost that we actually pay for our water that goes there and gets treated every year. We budget four-hundred-thousand dollars. Many, many years, it's been under four-hundred-thousand dollars. You see, last year it was two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars. And I've warned, I shouldn't say warned, but I've, I've informed the board that, you know, there's definitely going to be years where we're way over. Because like last year, we had a really wet year. We had a wet spring and a wet fall. And that's where you're seeing, we had this true-up this year in the beginning of the year, and we're, we're going to be at five-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars this year. So that seems like a huge number, and it is a huge number, but the way we're budgeting it, if you look, I mean, last year we saved a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, and I think it was like that the year before. So all in all, it kind of averages itself though. So hopefully next year will be a little bit less than four-hundred-thousand dollars. And then really on this whole next page, I really don't have anything highlighted. Everything's pretty much status quo, unless there's questions on anything. You know, the one thing I will say is property insurance in general has gone up. There was a reevaluation of all of our properties, and I think the, the values went up and that in turn raised the rates a little bit. So we saw that in the general fund too. And then moving down to the collection system and the, the, way at the bottom would be our capital. Again, we budgeted two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars in the sanitary, and in that case, it was underneath, we're at two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars for Best Shot way at the bottom there. We had, we're going to be running at about an eighty-four thousand dollar deficit for this year, as best I can tell, or the audit will tell us exactly. This is even healthier than the water fund, and we have about one and a half million dollars sitting there. We've been preparing, we had some debt service drop-off two years ago that was significant. And we know that the treatment plant's going to need an upgrade here again in the phosphorus. So we're, we're sitting in good shape there for whatever that may come with. But we are prepared for, maybe at some point, John, to your question before, depending on what happens at the treatment plant, this might be something we need to look at, a rate increase at some point down the road in the next ten years. Questions on that? All right, moving ahead to storm water then. This one gets even simpler. Very short budget comparatively to the other two. Pretty simple, very simple for us to estimate. This one was, remember, was put in place in two thousand and seven, was, was implemented in two thousand and seven, prior to that, storm water was paid for by the general fund. We have not had a rate increase ever since it was put in place. It was fifty-six dollars per year per home, so to speak. And a home is considered one residential unit. Commercial properties are charged based on square footage of, of impervious surface compared to a home. So a home, a single residential family home is paying fifty-six dollars a year, and that's divided off between three categories. That has been the same ever since two thousand and seven. We're getting to that point now where it, you know, we, we're starting to do these projects. I talked about this pond project we just did, and I said that's going to be the next kind of phase of what we're doing here, is we're going to have to clean all these ponds. So this one certainly, I would say, has a better chance of having a rate increase in the next couple of years. This year, we're not proposing anything for 2021. But if you go to the second page here, you're going to see, we spent a lot of money this year in capital projects. We spent four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. If you work your way down the page, right at the second to the last line, you'll see grants. We did get a hundred-and-five thousand dollars in grants. And I, I did want to inform the board, the, I just got this late last week. If you recall, the pond cleaning project originally was like a hundred thousand dollars. It was a hundred-and-twenty-four with engineering. We had originally gotten a fifty thousand dollar grant. It was a fifty-fifty grant. We went, after the project came in higher, just like two weeks ago, we went back to the DNR and said, hey, if there's any money left over, we'd like to increase that. And then we did get approval for that. So I think we got an additional twenty-four thousand dollars, and not exactly the number. So that was good work on Mitch's part to go back and get that taken care of. But you'll see, we're still in the deficit of about three-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars there. That right now has four-hundred-and-four thousand dollars. That one replenishes pretty quickly, like probably close to a hundred thousand dollars a year, even though that maybe that doesn't look like it on paper here. But the other thing I talked to our auditors just last week about, it's very, very typical to kind of float a loan with the other utilities if you ever have. You know, if, if this utility would get short on money, very typical to say, hey, the wastewater is going to give it five-hundred thousand dollars, and rather than taking a borrow, because you can, it's a little bit cheaper money, you can charge interest, but we probably wouldn't. And I, I feel very comfortable where we're at now, but we will start looking at these pond cleaning projects and looking at, do we need to do a rate increase? It's very affordable right now. It's a small charge, fifty-six dollars a year. You know, if we would increase that even a couple bucks a year, it's not a huge, huge difference to the tax, or the rate payers. If there's no questions on that, those are utility budgets. Like I said, they're simpler than the general fund. And if there's no questions, we'll bring that back. I might change some of those few little numbers I highlighted and bring that back next week for approval through resolution.
All right, thanks, Nick. Any questions on that item? All right. Moving down to, are each closed session? Can they get a motion to go into closed session, please?
Make a motion to go into closed session. The discussion of the issue under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen twenty-five, that one, that C, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee who would the government provide as jurisdiction or exercise its responsibility. Item A, the IAFL, the LEBR, and SORD, the contracts.
You got a second?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Horning, second by Price to go into closed session. You got a roll call, please?
Duffy.
Yes.
Horning.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Will.